And I just want to remind, first of all, thank the people that are attending online and just remind folks that this is a formal council meeting, so we don't chat back and forth either between council or staff. But you can send us emails and we can respond after the meetings unless you're providing public comment. So with that, I would like to call the Tuesday, August 18th, 2020 Duval City Council meeting to order at 7:05. Would you please join me in reciting the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Bridgeman.
Here.
Councilmember Ayer. Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Remington.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Napland.
Here.
Councilmember Langle.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. Under the consent agenda, please add payroll for August 5th, 2020 in the amount of $183,339.15 and payroll for August 20th, 2020 in the amount of $171,806 and claims for August 18th, 2020 in the amount of $307,718.35. And are there any council members that would like to speak this evening? And just remind folks, I can't see the hand up, so just wave it in front of me so I can see it. Councilmember Napland? Anyone else? Councilmember Langle, okay, thank you. And with that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda?
Mike Remington still moved?
Second, Michelle Hoag.
Great, we have a motion by Mayor Protem Remington and a second by Councilmember Hoag. All those in favor of approving this evening's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Mike Remington still moved?
Second, Michelle Hoag.
All right, Mayor Protem Remington moved, Councilmember Hoag second in adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we will move directly into comments from the audience. First of all, clerk, did you receive any written comments via email asked to be submitted into the public record?
I did not receive any emails and I have allowed all of our four participants to speak. So if they want to unmute themselves, they may do so now.
All right, I'm looking for unmuting for anyone that would like to speak this evening. All right, seeing none, thank you. We will go ahead and move on to scheduled items. First of all, the mayor's report. I did take a little over a week off to spend time with my family. It was amazing how much I realized I actually needed it and how well I slept. But businesses continue to go on. We've received quite a few applications for the small business grant assistance and got the letter out to the nonprofits as of today and are hoping to do the quick turnaround on that. Thank you, Councilmember Langle, for volunteering to review the business applications. I didn't see anybody else volunteer. So if there's anybody else that wants to help us with that this week, please send me an email and then we'll get that done as quickly as possible. The other item I wanted to bring up to you is the status of the depot deck. I believe it was on, in early July, the city council contracted for work on the Duval building deck replacement for a contract of just about $75,000. The contractor was given notice to proceed and materials were in the process of being ordered. However, the city was told there was a delay in material orders and supplies were difficult to obtain, but they were moving forward. During that time, the contractor ordered shop drawings for the rebar specifications and was anticipating working on site. Unfortunately, on August 7th, the city received an email stating that the contractor wanted to cancel the project due to unforeseen circumstances and would be unable to complete the project as their current situation for their business is dire. It was also stated that Allied Roofing and Insulation Services was going to be terminated and closing its doors in the next couple of weeks and could no longer proceed. Mr. Lenishewski had been out of the office prior to being able to share the news. So apologies for the delay in informing folks. Our staff has been working with legal counsel over the past few weeks and on fixing this item, including a notice of project cancellation. Staff issued the letter today. There are no costs having been incurred for construction or any to be paid. So our next steps are to put the project out to bid again. And the primary reason for that is we've been advised to not entertain previous bids as a couple of months have gone by and we did actually enter in a contract with Allied. So this is unfortunate and it continues to move back this long-term maintenance project. But I'm hoping that with the next bid, we'll be able to get it in process and completed soon so that as soon as we can open up that building, we can provide access to the public again. Anyone have any questions? All right, seeing none, Councilmember Napland?
My unmute button is very sticky for some reason. So I just wanted to mention as a follow-up from what I had brought up at the last COW meeting about the internet access reliability speeds that we have out here. And I did a little more digging into the King County broadband study and there was a person that you could contact for more information about what's happening. And I reached out to her and just shared some of the concerns that we have in our community and especially in light of coronavirus and so many people working from home and invited her, and I need to check to see if we can schedule it at some point, to potentially have her come to one of our meetings and share more about what is being done, if there's a timeline. Just I feel like our community is very interested and rightfully so. It's a hot topic and it's not just a want, it's a need. So I haven't heard back and hopefully I will, but I just wanted to share that and maybe I'll work with Councilmember or Mayor Protem Remington and try to schedule it if she's willing to come and speak with us.
Thank you. And on that note too, Jody was able to make connection with WAVE, so they are going to come out and give a presentation on September 15th specifically about their broadband services. And we'll try and get some information out to council and the public as well as what we have control over and what we don't. And I just will mention that I believe it was the AWC Legislative Committee just about two weeks ago. This was a hot topic and every regional meeting that I'm at, this is coming up. And it's not just Duval. Every city in the region is facing significant issues with the internet. And on the AWC agenda, we are working to get that on as, for a federal side, as getting it declared a utility. If they were declared a utility, we would have a lot more options as a city as well as our consumers would have a lot more options with getting their service right-sided. Unfortunately, that part isn't going to happen until the FCC board changes and decides to move that forward and that's going to take a significant amount of time. But so thank you for reaching out to them on that. But I did want to share that with council as that's part of what's coming forward. So Councilmember Langle? You're unmute, Councilmember?
Yeah, I just wanted to share just a little bit of a description about how FNA is working with administration. And administration makes every effort to get us materials such that we can review them and the committee can do the deep dive that council has asked us to do. But sometimes that's just not possible. And Director Mason has, works incredibly to get us information. But I think it's important for council to know that in every instance, we don't have an opportunity to look at things in advance. And so I don't want there to be the presumption that we always can do that. It's important that administration move things along and we respect that. And we do feel that anytime we have an urgency that Director Mason does do everything she can to meet our needs. But we haven't had a finance report in terms of the quarterlies really at a full council meeting and we probably should do that sometime pretty soon. And in particular, we shouldn't have that because we're going to enter the budget season and it's important for council to know how far we've come. And there's some good news in those numbers as well. So I'd like to see that on an agenda.
So let me ask a quick question of council. Council receives those reports quarterly via email and in written reports. And I think part of the questioning, the finance committee does the deep dive, but we also have some council members that have been around a while and may not have questions on the reports. So I'd like to take the temperature of the council on whether you want that to be discussed at a COW or not or if you're comfortable with the written reports and letting the finance committee do the deep dive. Councilmember Bridgeman?
I'm fine with the committee doing the deep dive and covering it that way. I don't need to get that involved with it because I tend to look at it. It's a biennial, so I like to look at the whole picture of it versus tracking it so closely and discussing in a COW. So I'm fine if the committee does the deep dive.
Councilmember McHenry or Mayor Protem Remington? Councilmember Henry. And I do want to point out that all of these reports are posted on the website. So since Dana started doing and we don't just post them on the website, we broadcast them out through social media as well to provide a little more awareness to the public of them.
Oh, I mean, of course, I'm comfortable with the finance committee doing the deep dive, but you know, I see the value in every now and again, all of us being brought in and talking about it more in-depth. It keeps us all on the same level. Because I think with committees, at times, it might be easy to forget that, you know, the rest of us haven't heard some of the in-depth discussion. So I don't see the harm if it's something that's doable for Director Mason and to just kind of bring it to COW every now and again and go a little more in-depth with everyone.
Okay, good feedback. Mayor Protem Remington?
Thank you, Mayor. I enjoy seeing it now and then. I think COW would be appropriate. It also provides support for the Finance Administration Committee. Kind of keeps all council members engaged and responsible for that information. It is available online and I do take a look and that's very helpful. But still having that interaction with staff, it wouldn't have to be all the time. And certainly the committee can decide when some of these items, it's time to go to council. We respect the challenge with staff time and just scheduling so much now during COVID. So it's a bit of a balance, but certainly, yeah, I think that'd be good.
Okay, thank you. We'll do that then. And with that, are there any council committee reports? Councilmember Hoag?
We did have a finance committee meeting yesterday and I appreciate Director Mason brought us revenues to review. We just had an initial look at it. We didn't receive it till right before the meeting. So we're still kind of, you know, working through that. And I think what you brought forward was wonderful. It was really good to look at. I think as we go into 2021 and 2022, one suggestion I brought up is that we really look at some of our revenues really closely, not knowing how COVID is going to affect, you know, some of our revenues. So that might be something that would be good to bring forward to. That's just my own personal feeling. It's not a report from the meeting, but might be something good to bring forward during a COW meeting, a discussion about revenues and if we're going to be affected by COVID, to maybe retract how our budgets looking throughout the year.
So we will, the good news is we actually already have that on the schedule for, I believe it's a September 1st meeting. Is that correct, Director Mason? So that's a standard part of the budget process is going over and looking at projected revenues and just acknowledging as well that those revenues fluctuate and they can fluctuate significantly in their estimates. But I have gone over the revenues with Director Mason and she's done an excellent job at looking at what our potential impacts could be and working with our building department and community development and public works to get not just the assumption, but what's really going on specifically with our permitting and building and what to expect there. So I feel like she's got about a solid hold on the numbers as you can have as a finance director right now. So, but we will definitely, that is coming forth on the first. And so we'll be able to have that broader discussion with the group then as well. So thank you for bringing that up. Mayor Protem Remington? Oh, sorry, Councilmember, did you have?
Dana did it. Director Mason did a great job.
She did. Mayor Protem Remington?
Well, Mayor, this isn't necessarily a city council committee report, but I am on the Snohomish County RIA-7 Committee. Been meeting for about two years now. This was a State of Washington directive from the governor for watersheds throughout the state of Washington to help protect in-stream flows. It's a, you know, the goal here is to help bring back our salmon. And the reason I'm bringing it up tonight, we've scheduled September 15th, tentatively for the COW to have Ingrid Jones from King County come and just kind of give an overview to county or to our city council. They will come up with a draft report, which we're required to do probably by the end of August. And I'll send that to the mayor and to Laura for their review. The impact to Washington or to a city of Duval is really negligible. What, so what does all this mean? By the way, Snohomish Rec, it's the second largest watershed in the state of Washington. So it has a huge impact on salmon and streams. So what it really says is that if your city and county that provide, add wells to your system and you're taking water out of the ground, you have to put water back in the stream because those wells do affect water in the stream itself. So it's water in and water out is the term that they use. But because we don't have wells here in Duval, it really has very little effect on us. But it does have effect overall on our stream flows and our salmon. So we'll be passing that report on. There's 30 of us on the committee. All those involved, including city of Duval, have to approve the plan. If the plan is not approved, and it has 100%, everybody on every city, every group, the tribes, if somebody, one entity doesn't approve it, it goes back to the county and the county does the plan instead. So it really has been on us to come up with a good plan. I'm really proud of this group. It's not my expertise, although I'm very interested in it. But we have incredibly bright folks that their life has been dedicated to in-stream flows, salmon ecology. And so they'll be coming forward to share the plan. Jennifer Napland's been the backup for that. And I appreciate, there's a ton of information we get sent on a regular basis. So I appreciate her support as well. But I'm just giving the heads up, that'll be coming forward. We look forward to sharing our work and hopefully that plan will move forward and we can do a better job in the watershed of protecting our in-stream flows and salmon.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. Are there any other committee reports that we've missed today? Okay, seeing none. We will go ahead, essentially did my administration update and the mayor update. You know, obviously, we're just moving along with COVID and trying to get the budget done, et cetera. So I'll leave it at that. But we also have an update on the schedule from Fire District 45 with Chief David Burke. Welcome, Chief Burke.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to share some information with you guys and keep you updated on what we're trying to do. To begin with, calls. Previously reported that we were kind of behind following the state and the national trend with the pandemic that we were a little bit slower, but calls have certainly picked up. This is one of our busiest months of the year traditionally. So July finished with a couple above our five-year average. We had 102 calls for service and our year-to-date total for the same time caught up with the average for the same time period. And as of this report, we've run 52 so far this month. So we are back to normal, I guess, as far as numbers go. Related to the pandemic, it's probably an important note for you guys to know that our calls for COVID-related responses continue to drop and our interactions with COVID-positive patients are down to less than one per month. So we're getting the information. I think the public has reacted well, specifically in our response area. The dispatchers are screening the calls and so the one per month that we're averaging, you know, we're well-prepared and we're not exactly having an exposure even though we are encountering a COVID-positive patient. So that's good news from the response end. Our trends are down and trending down, so that's very good news. Also, in, we're working on budget. I heard the mayor mention that. We are hard at it. And because of the benefit service charge, our month for draft budget submission has moved up. It's advanced to September. So I'll have the draft board or draft budget to the board in September to allow time for a public hearing for the benefit service charge, which will also take place in September, October in that timeframe. So watch for that. Like everybody else, we have our challenges and we are monitoring them closely. Spending, we're watching it very closely and trying to save where we can. Kind of ironically that I follow this with budget, but we have hiring opportunities. We currently are accepting applications for entry-level firefighter and hope to have three selected and appointed by November 1st. We're also taking applications through the middle of September to fill the vacant deputy chief position with the same onboard target time of November 1st. So if you know anybody that's interested and qualified for either of those positions, information's available on our website and we welcome all to apply. Related to calls, mobilizations, it's been kind of a slow start to the wildland season, but with the recent hot weather that we've had, record-setting and the like, they've started popping up here in the state. So one of our lieutenants was deployed as part of an overhead team yesterday and he has been positioned in Oregon, kind of a stage, hoping to have people close if something comes up. Other than that, it's been fairly quiet. Our tender went out for a few days last month, but we're continuing to monitor that and we're prepared locally as well. The new station, work continues on that and we are hopeful to meet that fall opening. I'm thinking probably the end of November. We're targeting roughly the 25th, which is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. We'll see how that works. Ironically, with the pandemic, delivery for construction materials and some of the building trades have been slowed or delayed because of that. So it's been kind of an interesting event to watch this project come forward and see how people deal with that. But if you get the opportunity, drive out Cherry Valley Road, it looks great and we're pleased with the work thus far. And unless there are any other questions, I would be happy to entertain those. That concludes my report to the council tonight.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Napland?
I had a really quick question for you, Chief. You had mentioned at your last update that we would be getting, or you are working to train for a fire inspector?
Yes.
So I was just wondering the status and maybe the timeline of when that work would start?
So that's kind of a multi-pronged question. So he is continually working and trying to attain certifications, but part of that competency is based in experience. And so actually, even today, our guy, John, he worked with Barry and taking care of the local business inspections that are going on here in Duval. And so I also send him to Woodinville to get some experience with Barry there as well. I've got one more class that he needs to take. It's a warm-up class before he tests for the inspector certification. And then, you know, that's just the basic beginning. From there, there is everything from plans review to some sprinkler design and testing and those types of things. So we will continue to broaden his experience and education and certifications. Now, if your question was intended to, when do I believe that he could be a standalone person functioning in the role as a fire marshal or something for both the district and the city? Depending on his appetite and the availability of classes, which has been a big struggle for us during the pandemic, I would say we're probably a year depending. And that's a really soft guess because you've seen what's happened with our inspection program this year, right? And so even with Barry and everything else, we've had to delay because the businesses have been restricted or closed or those types of things. And so we're having to navigate that, which is really kind of challenging. They're back out in the field doing it now. We're hoping to get that picked up. But I can honestly tell you with the late, with the late start that we have this year, it's highly unlikely that we will do all of the businesses, other than those that are permitted and maybe a few more. It's going to be kind of tough, but it's the same everywhere. Did that hit your question or close to?
That definitely answers my question and we're just thrilled that you're dedicating resources to that. So thank you so much.
Problem.
Councilmember Langle?
I'm sure you were hearing Director Thomas's report on the number of permits that we have coming out in our pipeline, which is pretty extraordinary, really unprecedented. How do you see this challenge interfacing with the challenge we have on keeping development moving? And the sense I get as a council member is that we may or may not be able to consistently access Woodinville. So any suggestions for us there?
Yeah, so again, kind of a multi-pronged approach. Maybe an interim step would be to look at maybe, I guess, a supplementing contractor that we could bring in. Maybe someone who has experience that's a retiree or, in the past, the city had used with the district, we had an individual contractor that came in to help do that. The risk that we have is you need continuity. If you're doing, say for example, a new building and it's got a sprinkler system, you need to have the same inspector to be optimal. You need to have the same inspector there from the plans to the rough end, to the finish, to the final, to have that continuity to know the project and to make sure that the things that were cited are corrected, et cetera. And so I think that maybe, I will offer up John, our inspector, that maybe he could be, I guess, the conduit that goes between Barry, the Woodinville Deputy Fire Marshal, a supplemental contractor or whatever. I offer him to help participate and maybe bring those people together because the experience would be good for him as those buildings come up and the permits and everything else. And so maybe that would be enough to help bridge the gap until his experience is such that he could run independently.
Whatever you can do to help Director Thomas and her team would be deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm committed to doing that. I want to be a partner in that and we're doing everything to make that stuff go as smoothly as possible.
Thank you, Chief Burke. Any other questions for Chief Burke this evening? Well, fingers crossed that the fire season does not get worse.
Thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome. Have a good evening. And we have nothing left as far as reports, but I realize that we do have an opportunity for questions for Ms. Thomas based on her report during committee of the whole. So I wanted to touch base with council and see if any folks had questions for her. Councilmember Langle?
This is maybe more of a comment, but because it's something I've brought up before, we do not have a solid way to invest in the planning responsibilities that are required of the city of Duval by law. And these things come up and we know that they're there, but it's not like we have a consistent list in front of us to remind us of how serious the backlog and the demands on staff time are. And so I just feel like I've got to keep bringing this up, not because people aren't hearing me, but because I think it's such a critical subject. Are. And so I just feel like I've got to keep bringing this up, not because people aren't hearing me, but because I think it's such a critical subject. And. It when you think about how demanding and expensive just the amendments to the comprehensive plan. Are going to be, it's it's really pretty astounding. And we might as well start digesting that a little bit at a time because these are, these are very, very big items. And then we haven't even started talking about like, what are we going to do to restore our our waterfront? With the, you know, the bank erosion and all the environmental work around there. We really do have a huge mandate. But not an easy way to fund it. And certainly the state has the requirements, but they don't fund it. So. Just a comment on that. And I appreciate how hard they work to try to keep it all together. Not an easy thing to do.
Thank you, Councilmember. I do appreciate that you're one of our strongest allies in recognizing that and helping. Find creative ways for us to kind of move some of this stuff forward. So thank you. And thank you for keeping that at the forefront. Any other questions? Councilmember Napland?
It it was a question. I think I I we were. Contemplating having an intern and I, for some reason, I was going to bring it up, but I believe that was, was that for finance?
Yes.
I was, I apologize. As soon as I I raised my hand, I thought, no.
Yeah.
Curious about where we're at with that, too.
So I can answer that. Dana's interviewed and selected her intern and he starts on Monday. So she's got a list of things for him ready to go. Which is fantastic.
That is really fantastic. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from Ms. Thomas? Okay, we'll continue to move on in our agenda. Hold on, just let me pull it up on my screen. We do not have a presentation this evening or a public hearing, so we'll move straight into new business and this is definitely finance related. Agenda Bill twenty dash seventy-two Finance Point Five FTE Accounting Associate for Discussion and or Decision. And Ms. Mason will take the lead on this.
Okay, can everyone see that? Okay? Okay, so good evening, Council, Mayor Dana Mason, Finance Director. And this is a request for position change and release of budget restriction. So just a little history about the city's accountant. It's in the biennial budget, it's budgeted for point seven five FTE. And in Ju- July twelfth, in two thousand nineteen, the accountant left. And the utility billing clerk took on accounts payable duties, receiving out of class pay. And the city advertised for the position twice, but did not receive sufficient eligible applications the first time. And then the second time we did select somebody, but they didn't accept the positions because it was non-benefited. So but in the meantime, October two thousand nineteen through May twenty twenty. We contracted services, accountant services at forty-five dollars per hour. Once COVID happened, we couldn't use that contractor anymore. Because they weren't allowed in City Hall. So our accounting associate. Took on the accountant duties and is also receiving account of class pay and she's doing a fantastic job. So this request is to change the point seven five FTA accountant accountant position. To a point five FTE Accounting Associate. The duties will primarily primarily be payroll related, but she'll also or he'll also do other things. The cost savings from September fifteenth to the end of the year is about six thousand five hundred. And then we would keep the accounting associated associate and utility billing. Associate in their current cap capacity of work without a class pay until the salary study is complete. And then the other request is to release the funding restriction in ordinance twelve sixty-four to allow the hiring. Of the point five FTE Accounting Associate. And if council is okay, I would like to. Request skipping the three touch rule so we could start looking for the point five associate right away. Are there any questions?
I can't see everybody's hands, so.
Let me stop sharing. I'll stop sharing. There we go.
Any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I I confer. Oh, Councilmember Napland.
I don't really have a question. I just I as a member of the Finance Committee, I just want to say that I think this is a very. Good and a creative solution that I think will benefit the city. And so I'm. In full support and just wanted to provide that feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you. And yeah, this is definitely an important position. And as soon as that salary study gets out, we want to to get. Dana's department fully up and running. She's working. A ridiculous amount of hours every week at this point and we need to get that under control. So. This will help with that. And so if council is willing to. To suspend the three touch rule, I think that we all as administration would appreciate it. And I'd be happy to entertain a motion. Councilmember Lengel.
I make a motion to suspend the three point, the three touch rule.
Second.
Second.
All right, we had Councilmember Lengel make the motion to suspend the three touch rule. Councilmember Napland seconded with. Councilmembers McHenry and Mayor Portem right behind. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those. Oh, sorry. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, do we have a a motion on the agenda bill? Councilmember Lengel.
I make a motion to approve Agenda Bill twenty dash seventy-two Finance Point Five Accounting Associate Position with the understanding that. That will release the funds. In the council resolution to proceed with hiring the position.
Do you have a second?
Second, Amy McHenry.
So we had Councilmember Lengel first and Councilmember Hoag second. Is there any further discussion by council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes and yay, Ms. Mason's getting extra help finally. This is good news. So thank you, council for that. Moving on to Agenda Bill twenty dash seventy-three, authorize the mayor to sign grant agreement with King County to provide funding for the city's Small Business Assistance Program. For discussion and or decision, Ms. Mason.
We'll share my screen again. So at the last council meeting or the council meeting before, actually. The the special, the special meeting on the twenty-eighth, council passed resolution twenty seventeen authorizing the use. Of funds as part of the the King County Grant Funds as part of the Small Business Assistance Program. But the grant had not yet been awarded to the city. We were just anticipating that it would be awarded. So the city has been awarded the funding and. This request is to ask council to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement with King County. To provide funding for the Small Business Assistance Program. So eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. Are there any questions? Stop share.
Not seeing any. So with that, we would need a motion to suspend the three touch rule. If council is okay with us accepting this grant. Councilmember Lengel.
Make a motion to suspend the three touch rule.
And Napland.
All right, we have a motion in a second by Councilmember Lengel and Napland to suspend three touch rule. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And would any council member like to make a motion on the agenda bill?
Sure, I make a motion to. Pass AB twenty dash seventy-three authorize the mayor to sign grant agreement with King County. To provide funding for the city's Small Business Assistance Program.
Do we have a second?
Second, McHenry.
Councilmember Napland made the motion. Councilmember McHenry seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you. And moving on to Agenda Bill twenty dash seventy-four, resolution amending the Small Business Assistance Program. And this came up as a result of questions. The businesses have had since we released the program. This is discussion and or decision and thus would need a three, a suspension of the three touch rule. And I will let Ms. Mason. Explain the change.
So on the twenty-eighth, it's a special council meeting that council passed the. Small Business Assistance Program Resolution. The city has received twenty applications to date. And we would like council to amend the program to allow for small businesses who have already received a grant from another source to apply. And allow businesses without a physical storefront to apply. These were the questions that we would, the mayor, I believe, received significant. Inquiries about these two items. And then we also put a caveat in there that. Those who meet the original criteria may be given preference to those who did not. And then also to extend the application deadline to yesterday, August seventeenth. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Napland.
Real quick question. I know the Finance Committee went over this and it was a meeting that I was unable to attend. And so maybe this question's been answered, but. I I guess in my mind, I had thought you wouldn't want the same receipt to be reimbursed more than one time. So.
Yep, that's.
You know, that you can't have received. Funding from another grant, I would say you can't have received funding for the same expense. So like if you're submitting PPE receipts, you couldn't have gotten reimbursed from two different people. And I didn't really see that specified. It's kind of a given. It's I I just wasn't sure if that needed to be clarified.
It I don't think it needs to be clarified because we have to follow the CARES Act guidance, which that's part of it. But when we originally. Brought this forward, we had no idea how many businesses in our community had actually received assistance already. So this is just that minor change that allows us to have that flexibility, but they. Ms. Mason and Mr. Tozer have already worked on putting the information out for that additional information. So that. If we've got folks that qualify that will be getting additional funding, that they'll just have to provide additional documentation to us to prove that it's not a double dipping. Councilmember Lengel.
Yeah, when we, in that committee meeting, one of, we talked about this a little bit, the and the the. What we didn't know was how many businesses might have received payroll protection. Funding. And so that was the issue. It was. We just didn't know. So I just want to confirm that. And then as far as the the businesses that have storefronts or not. We also knew that that might be something we would have to come back on. Really, all of this is. Confirming a discussion that was at that particular meeting.
Absolutely, and trying to respond as quickly as we can to to those that have reached out to us for sure. Councilmember McHenry.
Quick question on the deadline being set to yesterday. So. Have businesses reached out and we've told them to go ahead and. Apply and will possibly be changing this now?
Yes.
I'm just worried if people.
No, so we we did.
And that people have been lost in the cracks of not being informed. And if there's any way to even just make it until next week, would that throw things off?
We we did extend and we had the chamber push out the message as well as Sean. So. People have been informed to the best of our ability. Every every email that I got, I responded to let them know that we are asking for this formal change and to go ahead and submit their applications anyways. So I don't think we're really missing too many folks. Those that were concerned reached out. And I think that in general, they were happy to have a few extra days. I don't know because of the timeline. In which we need to distribute the money, I don't know that we have time to extend it another week.
Until Friday, maybe, just a few extra days.
That, Ms. Mason, can you can you remind me of the timeline that we said we are going to announce awards?
Yeah, so we said we would announce the awards by Friday with a really tight turnaround.
Yeah.
So.
In theory, we could, we could announce on Monday or Tuesday, but then we're also taking, that also takes two more days off of our staff being able to get contracts started and ready to go and out.
So I guess my question would just be if you had a business come forward, I'm just thinking of that worst scenario. And they didn't apply or reach out because they read it and just didn't think to ask. I I mean, what would you do in that situation?
I think we're in a very unique situation and I would be. More than inclined to accept the application and review it, as long as we hadn't already reviewed and made made the allocations. And, you know, I don't know what the the dollar amount being requested at this point is, so there might be opportunity moving forward as well. But I, this is such a dire situation for many of our businesses that I. While we have to have deadlines for our purposes, I'm trying to provide some level of flexibility for folks. Because they're also slammed business-wise, trying to keep their businesses going.
Yeah, and I and I appreciate that. And I I also think, I guess, that's my one hesitancy is with the date is because. Knowing how busy business owners are, especially in this time, they're not going to waste their time applying for something they might not even be remotely close to getting. So.
Yeah.
Guidelines and just didn't reach out and so therefore didn't know. That's my only thought, just thinking about that. But if you're willing to accept. Applications after the date, if they just didn't get a chance, if we have extra money, that that would be good.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Bridnicky.
And I think that the amounts that we're probably parsing out to the businesses are fairly. Small amounts, right? And so, you know, I I can, I understand. Councilmember McHenry, your concern about businesses, I'm one of those. But when I looked at the the amounts, I mean, for for a lot of us businesses who are losing, bleeding out thousands of dollars. And losses. We're going to be looking for like loans or something or bridge loans or something to carry us through this very difficult time. So I I think. In that respect, for the grant and the money set you're going to award to the businesses to help them are smaller amounts. So. If we do miss a business here or there, I think they're going to find a way. To to find to backfill that need. It's a five hundred or thousand dollar need for. Supplies for COVID or something like that with their business model. So I wouldn't, I'm not too worried about the businesses for this granting. I'd be way more concerned if we were awarding a larger sum of money for those businesses that can really help them through this time. If that helps.
Thank you, Councilmember Bridnicky. Councilmember Lengel.
Yeah, I just did some quick math. I think we have roughly what, if the maximum seventy-seven thousand approximately, twelve plus the fifty-five. So if you could, I mean. We all know that maybe I might have not done this well with my calculator. It's dark in this room right now. But I I think that's about three thousand dollars of business. Director Mason, check my math.
Have to bring my calculator.
There you go. I just used twenty to divide into that. Didn't I get it right?
Uh, well, it's approximate. Yeah, I do very close. You're very close.
I'm close. I just said, okay, it was like thirty-eight hundred. Well, I said, okay, there's like, throw the eight hundred out, but. It considering how much people have lost, it's. I still hope people feel like it's significant, you know, I mean, we're doing what we can. And. Whatever way you want to do flexibility is fine. As far as I know, I don't have anything going on Friday and I don't have anything going on next Monday, so I will do whatever it takes. That the mayor needs me to do to move the, to participate, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think Ms. Thomas had a comment, so let's get to that before we do the next question.
Oh, okay. So the good, well, I don't know if it's good news or bad news, but we did get the twenty applications and it exceeds the dollar value that we have to give to give away. So Dana, maybe, can you, do you remember what the value is? Like, we already have a pretty big need out there.
I can come up with it real quickly. I think some of them are not eligible, though. Like, some of them haven't been in business for an entire year, their six months. And some of them, their revenues are like for the entire year are ten thousand dollars and they're asking for five thousand dollars. So. There there may be, but let me. So there may be, but let me see. Here's all the questions. So it's $97,100, 97,100 that people are asking for, and pardon my dog.
Right. Councilmember Napland, you had a question?
Yeah, I just have been thinking about what Councilmember McHenry was bringing up. And I, I think what you have is, you know, sometimes you have a rule follower type of a person, and they would look at it and not ask and just put it away and never see it again. They'd see the deadline, they might find out that you made, you changed the exception, and they think, well, I missed the deadline. I didn't, I didn't see this soon enough and never asked. And so I do think it, those type of people are at a disadvantage because they didn't push and say, hey, can I have an exception? There's just people who are hesitant to do that. And so I feel a little bit uncomfortable about, you know, could we at least just extend it to the end of day tomorrow? It doesn't stop you from starting to review and go through the, and prioritize potentially. But I do feel a little bit uncomfortable about it really only being extended to the people who have pushed and said, well, could I? Or, you know, or the people who saw the email and anyway.
Director Mason?
Oh, I just wanted to have the spreadsheet up. And 20, out of the 20, 12 of them have already received grant funding. So they did get the message, somebody got the message that it was okay to still apply. And I believe that there is, just five of them do not have a storefront.
All right, so we would need a motion to suspend the rules and then a motion on the agenda bill to move this forward. Otherwise, we're with the original proposed plan. Councilmember Lingle?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Mike Remington, second.
Thank you. So Councilmember Lingle moved to suspend the rules. Councilmember Remington seconded. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And do we have a motion on the agenda bill?
Let's move it along. I'll make a motion to, no, my thing just went away. Okay, I'll make a motion because we have to get into the discussion here, whether there's an amendment. I'll make a motion to approve AB 20-74, Resolution Amending the Small Business Assistance Program.
All right, do we have a second?
Mike Remington, second.
All right, Councilmember Lingle made the motion. Councilmember, Mayor Portem Remington seconded. Discussion.
I move we amend the deadline to extend to end of day tomorrow rather than yesterday.
Okay.
I second that.
All right, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And thank you guys for your flexibility. All cities are kind of fumbling their way through this process. And some have more resources to commit than others. And I know that we're going to make an impact in our community. So thank you for being flexible and expedient on this issue. Moving on to unfinished business, Agenda Bill 20-66, Resolution Authorizing the Use of Electronic and Digital Signatures in the City of Duval and Adopting an Electronic and Digital Signature Policy for Discussion and/or Decision. Ms. Wykoff?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jody Wykoff, City Clerk, for the record. I wanted to let you know, this is my first experience working with Ogden Murphy-Wallace directly on something. It was a pleasure to work with them. And I will say that the original policy that you guys looked at at the last meeting was basically put together from me looking at other cities and kind of piecemealing it together. So when Ms. Minor reviewed it, she definitely helped us make it more Duval-appropriate and robust. So that is why you see so many track changes between the two versions. I did outline a summary of the revisions after the meeting. I just, it dawned on me that I had not addressed facsimile signatures, which is essentially like scanning a document, having somebody print it, sign it, scan it back to you, which is pretty common and kind of like the most basic way to get an e-signature accomplished. And probably the way that we will do it initially, while we are still choosing which platform we're going to work on for our e-signatures. So we added that throughout. She also helped kind of clean everything up by, instead of addressing specific people or saying city employees, we just reduced it to authorized signer. So that changes also in there. Did a little bit of rearranging. But otherwise, the edits are, were mostly just to kind of clean everything up and make it a little bit more simple to read and understand. Other than that, as the agenda bill does state, there is no budgetary impact for passing this resolution and authorizing e-signature. However, there will likely be a cost impact or a budget impact for the platform itself. I am still looking into two different platforms, trying to decide. One of them gave me a rough quote, which was way more than I thought it was going to be. So I'm still looking at both of them because I want to look at functionality in addition to cost. Of course, cost will always be one of the number one things that I consider before putting something forward for approval. And if need be, a contract will be coming forward to council as soon as something is decided on for the platform itself. Not sure if it'll be needed or not. It just depends on the cost, so. And I am here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Mayor Portem Remington?
Well, Jody, thank you. This is smart business. This helps modernize our processes for our city and helps us keep up with really something that many other jurisdictions do. I do have a question for you, Jody. So this is on here for decision discussion. There's no issue if we just wait a little bit? I mean, we may find a platform, so you're not asking for us to try to move this along tonight, is that right?
No, I mean, you still have a third touch available to you if you choose to use it. This is strictly authorizing us to do e-signatures. I'm not asking for any authorization to go through a specific platform. I'm not asking for authorization to purchase anything at this point. I'm just asking for authorization on a resolution to allow for e-signatures and allow us to start using the technology. Because we do, some of us do have Adobe Pro, which does have a very limited signature capability, which would still fall within this policy. So we could start implementing it immediately. And just the platform part of it is the next step for me.
I might suggest that we consider waiting on the approval, just, you know, another, another meeting. One is it meets our three-touch. But the other part, Jody, you may, this is new enough that you may have other things that you go, oh gee, I wish I had added. And this would just give you another couple of weeks to take a look, see if there's anything else that we might have missed. Allow our city attorney, if they think of something else and go, hey, this just came through. So that might actually be helpful and then bring it forward after, you know, for a third touch.
I don't think we have administration any objections to that. So unless somebody wants to move it forward this evening, I'm not seeing any hands. So we'll go ahead and move on to the, oh, Councilmember Hoag.
If we wait, is that, how inconvenient is that? I mean, because it's, right now, you're, you're having to physically sign everything, correct, Mayor? I mean,
Yeah, I, you know, honestly, I see that as part of my responsibilities, so I'm not too worried about that. Oftentimes, most often, things come in and they don't need to actually be signed for a week or two. There, it's rare that I need to sign something right away. It will be helpful and definitely streamline things long-term. But I, as far as my personal opinion, professional opinion, I can wait another, we can wait another two weeks. You know, it'd be nice, I think, for Ms. Wykoff's sake to get it off her agenda and just get it done. But I don't have any issues waiting.
I don't either. I'm fine either way. Any other questions? Okay, so I will put this on the next agenda, September 1st, for a third touch and potential decision. And hopefully I'll have some more answers for you guys regarding a platform by then, as long as I can set up the demos and everything in time.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Wykoff. Moving on to Agenda Bill 20-67, it's a resolution adopting a new policy for paying for meals and incidentals, business expenses, and repealing Resolutions 0823 and 11-07 for discussion and/or decision. Ms. Mason?
Good evening, Council and Mayor, Dana Mason, Finance Director. So I think most of you have seen most of these slides, but I'll just go through them one more time. So why change? Right now, the current guidelines are in two place. DMC 4.10.080, Expense Reimbursement, which was adopted in 1997, is primarily for vehicle use and it just briefly addresses the reimbursement of authorized travel costs. Resolution 1107 was adopted in June of 2011, and it applies to meals, snacks, and incidentals that are not related to out-of-town business travel. Neither policy either, you know, addresses out-of-town travel or the amount that can actually be spent on meals. And so as best policy practice suggests, the new policy encourages economic travel. It uses per diem rates for lodging and meals when traveling. It addresses non-travel meals separately, using per diem as a guideline. It requires pre-approval for travel. It requires approval for the exception to the travel policy. It requires the timely submission of receipts for non-per diem expenditures. And it requires support, like event agendas with travel claims. And then it also requires approval by a direct supervisor. And then other notable changes are, it allows employees in travel status to either use their city P-card for a meal up to the per diem rate, or they can use, just receive the per diem rate per meal and not have a meal, not have to turn in receipts, which saves finance time. And then they can also receive per diems for meals in advance. And then it uses per diem as guidance for non-travel meals rather than reasonable and necessary costs, which is, you know, depending on the person, it could vary quite a bit. And it addresses mileage reimbursement for employees to receive car allowance. It adds a definition section for clarification. It addresses non-staff member travel and no-shows, and this is new. It allows light refreshments when the public meeting is held for the purpose of soliciting feedback from constituents. And that was added from feedback from Councilmember McHenry. So the action that is needed is actually, you know, on the two agenda bills, I only have one slide deck. But one action is to approve the resolution adopting the new policy for paying for meals and incidental business expenses and repealing Resolutions 08-03 and 11-07. And then adopting the ordinance amending Municipal Code Chapter 4.1.0.080, Expense Reimbursement. Are there any questions? And I will stop sharing.
Mayor Portem Remington?
Mayor, Dana, this sounds really good. I do have one question.
Sure.
When we use the city card, some of the information may not be passed through. I'm used to seeing a receipt that includes the date, amount, they put down who it was that received the meal. In case of a meeting, what the benefit to the city for that meeting. But on a card, so how do we, how do we bring those together?
So if you do buy, so it actually is in the policy. So if you do buy food for a meeting, then you do have to state the public purpose of the meeting and who was attending. And I don't think that would be necessary for a public meeting for constituents. I think that the public purpose itself and just having it open to the public would be enough to show that there is a public purpose. And when you're using, and you're talking specifically about using your purchase card, right? So that has to be a line item. And it, even if you use your purchase card, you still need, so you could either use it for travel or you write down, say the mayor went to one of her mayor meetings and had to buy a meal. She would, but what this does is she would still have to write down what the meal is for and why it met this public purpose. But she would, this also gives her some guidelines for the amount to spend.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it would meet the state auditor's requirements. And it sounds like it all does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Napland?
I have one question, and I, maybe we should have noticed this during our Finance Committee meetings. But I, in the ordinance, it refers to this policy as an administrative policy that we're adopting it as an administrative policy. And whenever I hear administrative policy, it sounds more like it's going to become some kind of internal policy that can be updated administratively. And I don't think that was the intent. And maybe I need to ask some of the other council members at the Finance Committee meeting. But this is a very important document that helps us with oversight. And, you know, the first thing someone asks, you know, when they're worried about what's going on in the city, it's like, well, you know, how much are they spending on meals? What are they doing for travel? I think it's really important that these guidelines are publicly adopted. And, you know, I mean, it was in, it was in code for a reason. It's law. And so maybe you could explain, maybe administrative policy isn't the right word to use in the ordinance that we're adopting an administrative policy. Or maybe you could, maybe your attorney could jump in on what the legal definition of administrative policy is.
I might need Daniel's help on this.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, so I was just scanning through, trying to find where that is written, just so I can see it in context. What page are you on?
It's in the ordinance on, it's a whereas, when it's describing what we're trying to accomplish. Let me find the page.
Is it in the ordinance, maybe in the resolution?
I think it's in the
Oh, I'm looking at
I wrote that it was in the ordinance when I wrote my note. Right, yeah, it's, it is in the ordinance, the second whereas. Whereas, the city wishes to have an administrative policy adopted by resolution. And anyway, we've always, the way we've used administrative policy typically has meant that it just becomes an internal policy that administration manages.
Well, I mean, I guess the quickest answer that I can give is a resolution and a policy would be an internal rule and regulation adopted by council. I think it would still be adopted by council and enforceable in that way. An ordinance is more broadly applicable outside of the city to the residents and procedure and things. So, I mean, it would seem fine to me. I wouldn't view it as something that can be changed administratively. It's just meaning that it is an internal guidance for how city operates, is how I view that.
So you would view it that if any modification had to be made to this policy that we are adopting, it would have to come back to council?
If adopted through resolution or Yes!
Councilmember Lingle?
Actually, so funny that you brought that up. Actually, it's so funny that you brought that up. Because I don't have a problem with the resolution, but there are, there are a couple of words in the ordinance that I have substitute words for. And so I'll just throw that out there and I don't know if we want to, want to throw those, identify those now or whether you want to wait.
Well, if, if council wants to take action on this this evening, then, then I think we should take a motion and then an amendment. If council does not want to take this action this evening, then I would recommend bringing the wording changes to Ms. Mason and I and evaluating it. And if it's a, you know, no-brainer that probably doesn't need a lot of council discussion, we can make the change. If it looks like something that's going to create some questions within council, then we'll, we'll discuss it at the next meeting.
So would you prefer that I just tell you what the words are then?
Sure.
Literally two words.
Okay.
Okay.
It's up to council.
Whatever anybody wants. I, I have two words that I like differently in the, in the code.
Mayor, are we still talking, we're, are we talking about these two items kind of in tandem? Because they are in tandem. I just want to make sure I'm putting my notes in the right spot.
Well, Ms. Mason talked about both of them in that context and I think that, that it matters to both of them since they're, they are in tandem. So I'm happy to entertain the discussion before we get to a motion.
Okay, no worries. I just want to make sure I knew where I was.
So Ms. Lengel.
Okay, I guess, I guess I'll allow tape what the two words are. The proposal for the ordinance reads, "City of Duval employees shall refer to the City of Duval travel and meals policy for guidance on the procurement travel-related costs, the use of city impersonal vehicles while on the official city business, and meal expenditure reimbursement." What I would be proposing is deleting the word "refer" and replacing it with the word "adhere", because somebody can refer to something but not adhere. And then the other, when you look at the word for guidance, I'm not sure what that means in a code, quite honestly. So to me is for, for the requirements or something else. But to me, guidance, I'm not sure what that means in a code. So to me, that was an awkward word. So I'm wondering, the only two things I was, and you know, I'm kind of always looking at the specifics of the words. But to me, a code has to be very clear. You don't just refer to it, you're adhering to it, whatever that policy is. That's, that's your commitment in a code.
You know, I, I like that suggestion, the word change. The question I have is referring to guidelines. So there are, is, as I read the policy and our discussions have had it, there can be exceptions to the policy. So I would probably ask our city attorney what he thinks about that particular change and if he's got, if he likes that wording or if he's got a, a different wording. But I appreciate where you're coming from there, because we want to make sure all employees have a responsibility to adhere to their policies, the policies. But, you know, you could have someone less experienced in using those policies that could unintentionally misuse it.
Yeah, that's, that's really where I was coming from. And I went, and like I said, the word guidance to me was I wasn't really sure if that was the best word. So I'm just throwing that out for discussion, I guess, on the ordinance. But we, we discussed the travel policies quite a bit in finance and administration. I thought the discussion was really good with, with everyone, so.
Mr. Kenny.
So just a couple of thoughts. The way that I read that sentence is that the "shall refer" is merely directional. This is in the expense reimbursement part of the code and it's basically saying, for that, go here. So I, I don't see it as necessarily needed for a change there. But the guidance, I could see as standards or requirements or something like that. Because I, I think, I think the point is, you're looking at the code in the expense reimbursement section. Please go here for the standards. That's how I read it.
You know, I'm good with, with something that's just more clear that it's not an optional thing, you know?
Okay, Councilmember Napland.
I just want to say I support that change.
Okay. Mayor Portem Remington. Mayor Portem, you're on mute.
My apologies. I appreciate Mr. Kenny's, city attorney's guidance on this. Guidelines is sometimes a little flexible and I think we want to be a little bit more specific on it. And whether we call it the standard policy and just, you know, and I do agree, pointing him to that direction is fine. But once you get there, this is what you need to do. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember McHenry.
I agree with the changes as well. I wasn't sure if you wanted a formal motion from council to request those changes or if Director Mason just makes them and brings it back to the next meeting.
It, it's up to the council if you want to, I believe this is our second touch at council. So council can either suspend the rules to approve one or both ordinances tonight or we can push it to the next meeting and formally institute those changes beforehand. I think there's clear consensus amongst all of us that we're all okay with that. So I would have no issues going back and making the amendment and bringing it back unless somebody wants to make it on the fly and suspend the rules and get these off of the work, workload. Councilmember Napland and then Councilmember Lengel.
I just wanted to say real quick that Councilmember Ira hasn't been here for the month. He's taking, has taken some time off. So, you know, it, it's not like there's a lot of travel and meals happening right now. So why not just, you know, let him have one opportunity to look at it if he has something he might want to say?
All right, it's up to council. So if we're not hearing a motion, then I will take this as this discussion on both the resolution and the ordinance. And if folks aren't moving it forward this evening, then we can make that change in the interim and bring it back to the next meeting for final approval. So with that, unless there are any objections, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Before night.